Good morning, I'm going to call this meeting to order, the Lebanon County Commissioners. Thank you all for braving the conditions and getting here. First item is to observe a moment of silence. Thank you. I mean, pleasure to have. To the public for which it stands, I am a nation under God, municipal with liberty and justice for all. That brings us to our public comment time. Any public comments this morning?
I could I get something added to the agenda, please? Um, I got a call yesterday about in the towards evening about the scout expo. And so I ran over, it was close to the house. And apparently she had a whole list of things and they didn't get distributed and one was to call the commissioners. So anyhow, I I didn't have that to read the history, but what I thought we could do is at least provide the proclamation. So I'd like to add that for approval. Make a motion to do the proclamation for the scouts.
Second. Second? Second, questions, comments?
I'll add it to my
Yeah, down to Jamie's section, that's okay.
Yeah.
To for action.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you want to approve the motion?
Oh, all in favor of the motion to add that to the agenda?
Aye.
Okay, opposed, okay, so that's that's for Jamie. Uh, next item is the minutes from our meeting, uh, an executive session on January sixteenth.
I move.
I'll second the motion. Motion second, any questions, comments? Are you none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Have it, thank you. Now, time for the treasurer's report from Sal Newman, but that's not Sal Newman. Please introduce yourself for the record.
He treasurer.
Thank you, floor is yours.
We started with a cash balance of seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars and sixty-one cents. We had cash receipts on the fourth and the fifth of one million, six hundred and sixty-two thousand, one hundred and sixty-four dollars and seventy-eight cents, which brought our total cash to two million, four hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three dollars and thirty-nine cents, less expenditures of one million, six hundred and seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars and ninety-one cents, which brought, uh, less the tax claim bureau, which was two hundred and forty-seven thousand, three hundred dollars, twenty-four cents, which brought our cash balance to five hundred and four thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars and twenty-four cents. And that does include the year old for this this Friday.
Okay.
I'll move to approve of those reports presented.
I can.
If for the second, any questions or comments? None, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign.
Yeah.
Thank you. You introduce yourself for the record and please proceed.
Chad Seneble, Director of Human Resources. Under personnel transactions, Linda A. Taylor, Fiscal Assistant, Area Agency on Aging Termination effective January seventeenth, with the last working day being January third. Lauren Wade, Caseworker One, Children and Youth Termination effective January seventeenth, last working day, January sixteenth. Brizan Ortiz, Social Services Aid One slash Case Aid, Children and Youth Rescind Acceptance of Offer of Employment, except effective January twenty-first. Brianna Betts, Full-Time M A T P Officer, Community Action Partnerships, Rescind Offer of Employment, No Call, No Show, effective February third. Brad Zimmerman, Full-Time Telecommunicator, Department of Emergency Services, Termination effective January sixteenth, last working day, December twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. Marissa Shoemaker, Full-Time Telecommunicator, Department of Emergency Services, Resignation effective January seventh. Brittany Flickinger, Office Support Two, Domestic Relations, Resignation effective January fourteenth, last working day, January tenth. Rhonda Shope, E I Caseworker Two, M H I D E I Retirement, effective March twenty-second, last working day, March twenty-first. And Barbara Moody, First Deputy Prorontary Clerk of Courts, Retirement, effective March eighth, last working day, March seventh.
Motion?
Move to approve.
I'll second the motion.
The motion is second and I'm going to make a special note of Rhonda Shope with our M H I D E I. For seventeen years, thank her for remaining here as a service. Any other questions or comments?
I'd add Barbara Moody to that as well.
Oh, thank you. Um, any other questions or comments? None, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's have it.
Moving on the leaves of absence, Heather May at the Renova Center, five week leave of absence, all P T O donated benefit time effective January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five.
Awesome.
Second.
Motion is second, any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Same sign. Leave is approved.
Under changes of status, transfer of promotions, there's a motion to approve the request from Holly Leggy, Administrator of M H I D E I, to reclassify one of the current fiscal assistant positions in a grade twelve on the non-union salary chart to a fiscal technician position at a grade twelve. Or I'm sorry, the fiscal assistant was a grade eleven, the fiscal technician is at a grade twelve on the non-union salary chart, effective February second, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Second motion.
The second, questions, comments? None, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. It has proved.
Alyssa Hassler, Promotion from Caseworker One in Children and Youth to Caseworker Two, at the rate of one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy-three cents by weekly, effective February sixteenth. Samuel Walter, Promotion from Lance Corporal at the Correctional Facility to Corporal at the Correctional Facility, at the rate of twenty-eight dollars and one cent per hour, effective February sixteenth. Scott Hawker, Promotion from Sergeant at the Correctional Facility to Captain at the Correctional Facility, at the rate of three thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars and thirty-eight cents by weekly, effective February sixteenth. Jasmine Friend, Fiscal Assistant at M H I D E I, Promotion to Fiscal Technician at M H I D E I, at the rate of one thousand, five hundred and seventy-two dollars and four cents by weekly, effective February third. Ross Satazan, Transfer from Full-Time Correctional Officer at the Jail to Full-Time Deputy Sheriff in the Sheriff's Office, at the rate of nineteen dollars and ninety-four cents per hour, effective February eighteenth.
I'll move to approve those transactions.
Second.
Motion second, any questions or comments? Are you none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Changes are approved.
Under other transactions, Children and Youth would like to hire Nicole Considine as a Caseworker One, at the rate of one thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven dollars and sixty cents by weekly, effective February tenth. Department of Emergency Services would like to hire Devin Ayaza, Ayaza, Planning Officer, at the rate of one thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars and seventeen cents by weekly, effective February tenth. The District Attorney would like to rehire Diana Henry Quest as a Juvenile Service Provider slash Interpreter One, at the rate of one thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars and seventy-five cents by weekly, with one thousand, five hundred dollar annual interpreter stipend, effective February tenth. President Judge Tobak would like to hire Margaret Niketier as an Office Support Two, at the rate of one thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars and seven cents by weekly, effective February tenth. M H I D E I would like to hire Rebecca Starr as Office Support Two, at the rate of one thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars and seven cents by weekly, effective February twenty-fourth. President Judge Tobak would like to hire the following two, Adult Probation Officer One, both at the rate of one thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars and twenty-nine cents by weekly, both effective February tenth, and that is Mariah Minnick and Hassan Pensenites Cruz. The Prorontary Clerk of Courts would like to hire Jessmee Elise Benitez Roman, at a, as a General Clerk C slash Interpreter, at the rate of one thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars and thirty cents by weekly, with one thousand, five hundred dollar annual interpreter stipend, effective February tenth. Public Defender would like to hire Brandy Gladfelter, as a part-time Social Services Advocate, at the rate of twenty-seven dollars and eleven cents per hour, effective February tenth. And the Sheriff would like to hire the following two, Full-Time Deputy Sheriffs, both at the rate of nineteen dollars and ninety-four cents per hour, both effective February eighteenth, and that is Anthony Clough and Harrison Hansberger.
So moved.
I'll second the motion.
Motion is second, any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. And those transactions are approved.
Okay, moving on to Salary Board, Motion to Approve All The Transactions Previously Read Plus The Following. Andrew Simmer, Salary Increase Full-Time Telecommunicator, Department of Emergency Services to Telecommunicator Two, at the rate of twenty-one dollars and thirty-nine cents per hour, effective February second. Carmen Portez, Interpreter Stipend in Children and Youth, at one thousand, five hundred dollars annually, effective December first of twenty twenty-four. Robert Paul the Third, Longevity Payment, Adult Probation Officer One, at the rate of one thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and four cents. This is a one-time, three-year payment, three-year longevity payment, effective February seventh. Heather M. Whitman Schellenberger, Longevity Payment, Adult Probation Officer One, one-time, twelve-year longevity payment of two thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine dollars and twenty cents, effective February seventh. And Shannon Pascal, Longevity Salary Increase, First Assistant Public Defender, at the rate of three thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty-seven cents by weekly, effective February second.
Second.
The second, questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Foundation are approved. Oh, there she is. Morning, Erin, would you please introduce yourself for the record and you may proceed.
Sure, my name is Erin Moyer and I'm the Administrator for Lebanon County Children and Youth Services. I'm here today on two items. First, I'm here to present the remainder of our fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five placement provider contracts. And so the agency has a total of sixty-two placement provider contracts. Thirty-nine of those contracts were approved at the September fifth, twenty twenty-four Commissioner meeting. Um, the twenty-three remaining placement contracts that require approval, um, of those twenty-three contracts, three of those providers are not requesting an increase. The remaining twenty providers have requested increases with an average of eighteen point nine percent, all of them being within the state-approved rates. These increases are due to increasing, um, placement providers increasing wages to attract employees, um, increased costs for insurance and services needed, um, to be more specialized in trauma-informed care for our, our kids in placement. Um, overall, our placement providers are requesting an average increase of fourteen point seven percent across all of our sixty-two placement provider contracts. I would ask that you approve these remaining twenty-three contracts.
So moved.
Second. The second, any questions, comments? It was second question, not, it's more of an observation. I just, we deal with the same issues as far as wages and attracting employees and retention and so on. And I just want to keep people aware that we're competing, uh, the state-approved, uh, increases, eighteen point nine percent. Uh, just to put that in context of what we're competing with and trying to provide here for our employees. It's a tough, uh, equation. So.
Um, next I have, uh, reappointments for our Advisory Board.
Take action. Well, yeah, we didn't take action on that contract. So, uh, but any additional comments, questions? Uh, if not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, so now.
Thank you. Um, I'm also here to present the reappointment of three of our Lebanon County Children and Youth Advisory Board members. Um, they are Mark Pett, Sue Warner, Kimberly Miller, and Roberta Santiago, everybody here before. Um, but they will serve a three-year term, or they've agreed to serve another three-year term, which will expire on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven. And I ask that you approve these reappointments for these Advisory Board members.
I'll move it.
Second.
The second, questions or comments?
Um, I had Mark Pett, Steve Warner, Roberta Santiago, and I missed one.
It's Sue Warner, Kimberly Miller, and Roberta Santiago.
Okay. Warner.
Over.
Thank you.
Additional questions, comments? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. So approved, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
There, thanks. Morning, would you please, uh, introduce yourself for the record when you're ready, uh, and, and you can proceed, yep.
Teamlet's Warden at the Lebanon County Correctional Facility, I apologize. I, uh, sent over the packet for the CIPRIM, but I neglected to I neglected to add the Johnson Control.
Oh, I forgot the mention.
Yeah. Okay. All right, sorry. Thank you, Dylan. First on the agenda, you ready?
Introduce yourself for the record and you may proceed.
Okay, Teamlet's Warden at the Lebanon County Correctional Facility.
Thank you.
Go. Okay, first on the agenda is an attachment for the CIPRIM solution, Phase Two and Three Security Upgrade at the County Correctional Facility. It was discussed during budget. Uh, to proceed, we needed to request seven hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. I note that the first phase was completed in twenty twenty-four, which of the approval and payment of three hundred and thirty-six thousand. Phase two is five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's where the, where the, um, system is being built currently off-site. And during the budget conversation, I was allowed to proceed with, with phase three, which means as soon as the system is built, then we could pay the hundred and sixty-three thousand to have it installed and configured and commissioned. So I'm requesting a signature on the contract so we can proceed.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion is second, any questions?
Thank you.
Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Okay, then, action is approved.
And then second, I have the Johnson Control Proposal and Service Agreement. So C G L, our maintenance vendor, they take on the actual annual renewal to make sure somebody's coming in and, uh, doing the actual assessment. The individual parts and replacement falls back on the County Correction Facility and the budget. So what you see in front of you is a proposal and service agreement. They identified those areas listed that I would need to sign the contract so we can proceed with replacement and updating of the system. Uh, the amount is two thousand, four hundred and one dollars and twenty-three cents.
Mm-hmm.
Second. Motion is second, any questions or comments?
Sorry, I was just, uh, making eye contact to see if the solicitor had reviewed these.
Thank you. Additional questions, comments? Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. I have approval for the contract.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was unclear, I didn't hear anybody else, but you both, I didn't hear, okay. Morning.
Morning.
Danielle Hall, Chief Information Officer, Information Technology Services. I have four contracts presenting for approval. The first one is D D I Capital, that is for the extension of our I System lease to the true end of life, giving us more time to finish the financials package and the retirement package upgrades. It's a cost of five thousand dollars for that extension.
That's on you.
Thank you.
Second. Any questions or comments? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. I miss. We'll see.
Second contract is L R S, that is for the Pension Gold Retirement Program, uh, presenting on behalf of Mr. Metley. This is to upgrade the retirement package off of the I B M system I and get us into a fine software package to do that. There is, you want me to go up across, or are you good with
one scene?
Having read? Eric, just didn't, that wasn't good.
If you wouldn't mind, just a quick sketch.
Okay. Total cost over the five, five years, twelve years? No, two years. My apologies, this isn't really my contract, I'm just on the tech side of it. It's five hundred thirteen thousand dollars, two hundred and thirty-six cents is the cost to upgrade.
I'm sorry, five hundred thirteen thousand.
Two hundred and thirty-six dollars.
And it's that for both years, Sam?
Yes, that's five, May of twenty-five through four, one of twenty-six. That is the upgrade cost of the package.
Thank you. Second, if I didn't do that, then.
Second. Uh, yeah, was that second? Motion, okay, motion is second. Any questions or comments?
Might add, this is, uh, the cost for this comes out of the pension fund. Because it's related to the calculation of those.
It's all related to retirement, it's a retirement plan expense.
Thank you. Additional questions or comments? Now, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Contract is approved.
Uh, next up is the Prorontary Tellysoft M S B contract. This is really software that we've already implemented in the Prorontary Tellysoft. This is to have their online services and have credit card information installed. Cost of, there is no cost to the county on this because all the costs are done via fees for the services. There is a fee schedule attached to the last, uh, page of the contract or review. These rates are more than competitive with other institutions' rates. So there is a cost savings versus using other payment vendors. This will also be the vendor, will be coming back through towards the end of this year, hopefully, as we have more of a financial package in place with another competitive rate to get other offices such as Recorder Deeds and the Treasurer online with credit card payments as well.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion is second, questions, comments?
No, I think it's the same thing.
It's
Okay.
Just one, so the fee, um, is borne by the, the customer, like a three percent or whatever it is? Okay.
That is passed on to the customer for the service of being able to use the card, correct?
Okay.
Thank you.
Additional questions or comments? Not, uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. And it's unanimous, please proceed.
All right, last on the lease, or last on the schedule is the infrastructure lease. We are scheduled to upgrade the base infrastructure that supports the entire county network. This lease consists of the finance package and the professional services contract, sorry, to implement the said solution. It is fifty-three thousand dollars for the professional services for the engineering teams to
And how much was that?
Fifty-three thousand for the professional services portion.
Make a motion to approve the infrastructure lease.
Well, wait, that's just one, that's one piece of it.
Oh.
The other piece is, the total cost is a hundred, one million, three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, a hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Fifty-three thousand of that is the professional services cost.
One million, three hundred and seventy-nine thousand.
Yes, one hundred and ninety-eight.
One ninety-eight, thank you.
Second motion. Motion and second, present, action, uh, any questions or comments? None, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign.
Excuse me, but I can't see nor hear. Uh, Commissioner Phillips, I'd appreciate if he could verbalize it. Uh, if he's nodding his head, I, I can't tell.
I think so far, just for the record, all, all votes we've taken have been unanimous that
Inver, inverbal.
So, okay, try to do a little better. Anything additional?
No, that is all.
Hey. Thank you. Would you please, uh, introduce yourself for the record and then you may proceed.
Yes, good morning, Matt Gugli, County Solicitor. I have, uh, one item for consideration by the board this morning. This is a lease agreement between the county and the Borough of Cleona relative to the use of the Cleona Municipal Building. Uh, I should note that the first floor of that facility is used by, uh, Magistrate Judge Ditzler. Uh, and so this is a continuation, uh, this is a one-year lease expiring at the end of twenty twenty-five at a rate of one thousand, one hundred dollars per month. Uh, many of the terms contained in this lease, uh, have governed the lease agreement, uh, that we've had with the borough for, uh, the past number of years. And this is just a, a slight increase, I believe, Jamie, of what the county had been paying. Uh, in speaking with, uh, in emailing with, um, Mr. Johnson, who is the Borough Manager at Cleona, this will be on for the, uh, February eleventh meeting to be, uh, considered and affirmed by the Cleona Borough Council.
One difference being it's a one-year contract, one-year lease. We typically have six-year leases that coincide with the term of the M D J. Uh, they requested to just do a one-year because they're apparently in, uh, looking into changes to their police department and they're not sure how much space they'll need for that, so we're hoping they'll come back and continue it with us because it's a good location. Uh, but, but it's theirs, it's their building, so we will see.
A little bit, motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second, any questions or comments? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close same sign.
That's all I have, thank you.
Please proceed, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Please have a seat and, and, uh, each of you would like to introduce yourselves for the record and then you may proceed.
Yes, yeah, I'm Justin Thompson, uh, now former formal township manager. With me I have, uh, Shawna Urban, she's our office manager at our formal township. Uh, she kind of spearheaded the, uh, project here for the playground. Yeah, um, like I said, we just wanted to come present to you guys, um, with, with the, uh, our goal was mainly to uh, provide equipment that, uh, was accessible for wheelchairs, handicapped, uh, trails and strollers. Uh, so we, we did the Ford and Face Hard Surface, uh, which was certainly more expensive, but, um, we thought was necessary. Um, so, and like I said, a couple of years ago, we, uh, you guys helped us out on the walking trail. I'm just remember that, I think that was about twenty twenty-two.
That was true.
Yes, yeah, that was kind of phase one of the project, uh, to get that all paved and easily accessible. Uh, then we moved into this. So the, the total amount we got from you guys was about thirteen thousand. Whole project was one hundred and fourteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars. And the project was completed, uh, early November, uh, twenty twenty-four. Uh, to date, I mean, there, there's only been a couple of warm weeks of weather. Uh, the kids have been able to play on it, but so far it's, it's certainly well-received. Got a lot of, a lot of positive feedback going.
Yeah, it was beautiful, turned out great.
Yeah, thank you.
You folks, you know, the Colonel Township does a great job in the recreation area. Band was, uh, at that township.
Thank you.
Vision of the quality of life in Lebanon County, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for taking the time.
Thank you, guys.
Travel safely. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, please introduce yourself for the record and then you may proceed.
I'm the Chair of the Lebanon County Commissioner for Women, Becky Woodhouse, the Treasurer. Um, last year when we presented our report, we were here with the Historical Society and, um, putting together the women's exhibit and that was really successful. It's still up and running and it will be available through March, it's free to the public, um, during open hours. And it was a really valuable experience, we really appreciated that. Um, I just wanted to give you an update since then. And of course, we've been working on our Hall of Fame. Our next one coming up is March nineteenth, it's in the evening. I know some of you have already responded and we will see you there.
Yep, um, we, last year we also awarded six one thousand dollar scholarships to senior, um, six senior high school girls seeking post-secondary endeavors within the, the county. Um, that, what Becky just mentioned with the Lebanon County Historical Society was something that we did last year for the first time. Um, and then we also supported Girls in the Run and Junior Achievement. Um, unfortunately, last year, our, last year had to step down within the middle of her term. Um, so I had to step up and do that and, um, then I was voted into that. We have a few good plans for, for this year, the Hall of Fame will be now, uh, a gala. We have a few good plans for for this year. The Hall of Fame will be now a gala. And the income that we had last year, it was $15,404. Expenses were $16,650, which is separated there within the categories that we supported throughout the year.
Thank you. Did you have a handout or?
Yes, we did.
It's very interesting here.
Oh. Didn't see that coming. Incoming, right? Okay, thank you. All right, very good.
Overall, we have an active group.
Did you have any for the press?
We can give them ours.
Okay, we can make copies for them if they like.
Actually, thank you. Thank you for stepping up. Thank you both for joining us today. And thank you, you and your entire team for all the work you do to recognize and.
Thank you. Thank you for your.
Great job.
And we're going to pass on the clean and green rollback discussion. Matt wants to do a little bit more work about yesterday with some assessment staff and be back to that the next meeting likely. Ready? I have a Drug and Alcohol Commission Advisory Board termination. We received a letter from Jim Donmoyer regarding a member of the board and a decision to remove the member due to their bylaws and absence from board meetings. The policy for the board is that a member is expected to attend a minimum of three meetings per year to maintain their position. And so having not met that, they're asking the removal, Courtney Franklin.
Removal.
Courtney Franklin.
Okay. Move please, Dan.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and second. Questions or comments? None. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign.
Next is approved. Next, I have a resignation letter from Josephine Ames, resigning as the advisor to the Lebanon County Emeritus 250 Committee. And she left in her letter that her final day would be January 20th, 2025.
Motion approved. I will move that with regret.
A second motion.
Motion is second. Any questions or comments? I will say thank you to Josie for the time that she did give us and get us started. We have some momentum. And she just has some personal duties to be more, spend more time with her mother. It's getting up in years and and we certainly understand and appreciate that she has her priorities aligned. And again, she's she's available if we need her to consult with. But anyway, again, thank her for the service that she has given us already to get us started. So.
Were you able to, you know, more clarify getting up in years?
Oh. She's old on me.
Can we say that? You know, 100 and 100.
I'm not exactly sure the number.
100 and 100. I knew that. Is that awesome or what? Yes. Anyway.
God bless them both.
Yes. You're worth it.
Yeah. Well worth it.
It's amazing.
Yeah. So you're asking if. Interesting.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, before we take action, we are in the process of trying to identify a good person to fill those shoes that Josie has left open by her resignation. So make this publicly to anybody that is interested. They contact our office, contact anyone, commissioners. Let us know that you have some interest in doing that, but we're looking forward to doing that hopefully by next month sometime.
And I'm offered to chair the committee back when we first put it together. So that's, the offer's still on the table if no one else steps up especially.
So, thank you. Okay, so we did not take action, but to accept that letter of resignation with regret and with our thanks to Josie. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. You made it accepted. Please proceed, Jamie.
Okay, next, I've been asked to provide a letter of support for the Lebanon Rescue Missions Expansion 2025 Project at 1250 to 1310 Bittner Boulevard, providing, if approved, this expansion would provide three times the capacity of supportive emergency housing for women with children and seniors experiencing homelessness. They provide quality space for both the Lebanon Rescue Missions Agape Ministry for Women and the Lebanon Free Clinic, among other things, and they're asking for your support as they go before the city Lebanon zoning hearing board.
Make a motion to approve the letter of support for the Lebanon Rescue Mission to expand their projects on Bittner Boulevard.
Second. Motion second. Questions or comments? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Letter of support is approved.
Okay, next I have kind of a housekeeping matter. This is a resolution to authorize the chair of the Lebanon County Commissioners to sign future master planning agreements and unified planning work programs between Pendat and the County of Lebanon under the work that the Lebanon County MPO does.
Thank you.
Motion second. Questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign.
Right, next I have real estate exemption requests for disabled veterans meeting the requirements of the program for property tax relief. They are Thomas Tunsil of King Street, Myerstown, Bruce Smith of Lancaster Street, Lebanon, Paul Brennan of Lavender Lane, Lebanon, Michael Hale of Peasant Drive, Lebanon, and Marie Shown of Cornwall Road, Lebanon.
Make a motion to approve the five disabled veterans presented for considerations. Thank you.
Second, the motion. Motion is second. Questions or comments? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Exemptions are approved.
Right, next is a, an application for hotel tax grant from the Lancaster Kennel Club. And this is a repeat request. They have been to the expo before for their annual show and they're planning to have it this year on May 10th. They have been holding the show annually in, at the Expo Center since 1999. However, they missed in 2020, 21, 22 due to COVID. Prior to that, it had been held throughout various locations in Lancaster County. They did mention in here that they last year, it was last year, they the show coincided with the New York City show and they had hoped to catch people on their way there, but apparently some left early so they could settle in in New York this year. They think they're going to have higher attendance because that is not directly adjacent to them. So they do reserve a block of rooms. And I'm sure there are others that are purchasing rooms because they're coming from far in line from us go.
Needs to approve fact that about.
Um, could I please have the current balance of the?
I, I don't know if there was anything put in, but as of last time, after last meeting, there would have been 7,907,000 left.
Do you have?
I, I do not know.
Would you use a phone? Maybe you have to even find out for us.
Sally's not here, so I would contact her today.
Sally's not in?
No, she's not here today. That's why.
I'm not comfortable passing this until we know the balance. I think that's important.
Well, the balance is.
It's at least $5,000.
Pardon?
It's at least.
You would have enough to cover this one.
It's at least sufficient for this grant. There's probably been.
There's probably more there. I just, each month, some gets added.
Can't go.
Because this was December's figure, so probably some got deposited sometime.
At a minimum, our balance stands at.
Thank you.
Three times.
So, you have a second?
Um, I'm going to pass on that again. I.
I'll second that. Questions or comments? Oh, I'm sorry. Please.
Panter comma Lebanon City. We don't give any numbers on that. You read it, but you didn't tell us what their budget was or what they were asking.
Budget, the project cost was 20, is 20,838 and they're requesting $5,000 grant.
Thank you.
Any additional comments or questions?
Are these dogs just from Lancaster County or do they come from all over the place?
So, I mean, it's a long narrative. I don't know if I saw where all they come from, but. They have, they have, they're sold out of their 60 entries.
Oh, wow.
They're offering some additional trials this year to allow more participation. There's an, oh, I'm sorry, there's an owner handler class that drew draws 255 entries, so I.
We heard talks about the other clubs that are participating, including the Cavalier in Charles Spaniel, Spaniel, those, the Susquehanna Valley, Antietam Creek Samoyed Club and the Kerry Blue Terrier Club of Philadelphia that this club's drew an initial 38 entries, so apparently.
Yeah, so like a lead answer, especially your dog would be eligible.
My dog is a mine.
So we have motion and second on the table. Any additional questions or comments regarding this request? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close.
Aye. Again, I didn't.
Thank you for the record.
Getting current.
Two to one.
Numbers.
Get you that updated numbers. Yes, well, Sally. Thank you.
And lastly, I have the previously mentioned proclamation for the Scout Expo at the mall and proclaiming the week of February 7th as Scout Weekend, Lebanon County.
And make a motion to approve the Scout Expo proclamation.
I'll second the motion.
Motion is second. Any questions or comments? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. That proclamation is approved. Anything else, Jamie?
Not for me. The settlement deal scheduled at 1:30. Let's go say.
For that one.
One decision, I think.
I don't think so, no.
They were going to do it right after.
And Dan said.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We were going to do it.
They were going to do it. Five of it.
Yeah, okay. And it flew away.
So, anyway, so we will.
Yeah.
Motion to, or any other business to come before the board this morning. Entertain emotional journey. Second.